Everyone's had an opportunity to read the previous minutes. Any corrections or changes? Stand and approve as presented. President, the rest of the board, MCV presentation. You're up.
I'm sorry, I was not aware that I was doing the presentation, so bear with me while I kind of muddle through this. I would like to present to the city of Ava the Missouri Community Betterment 2018 Community Category 3 Ava Third Place Award for our efforts to present projects for the Missouri Community Betterment. And I went up to Columbia and received this award in October, and I would like for it to come to the city. So Mayor, if I could present that to you. And I need to let you all know what this is about. I don't know whether we wanted to do a photo op, but I just wanted to tell you just very briefly what this is about.
I think you're sure of the photo op.
I didn't get to have one with the governor, but he was there for the presentations that night. What this amounts to is that we joined Missouri Community Betterment as a city and county through the Ava Chamber of Commerce. And these, there are projects. Thank you. Go ahead and sit down. There are projects that are presented each year to Missouri Community Betterment that communities do to improve our community, to have more people involved. And this year Janice Lorraine and I submitted the Pioneer Heritage Festival of the Ozarks from a year ago. And the 2,500 miles activity that was done here, which brought in another 300 people. That point is to bring in tourism and build tourism and get a hold of the map. And so by doing this, when I went up to see this or to go to the community foundation or the Missouri Community Betterment Conference, I had an opportunity to stand up and say, how many people know where Ava is? And there were about 200 people in the room. Roughly 85% of them, 90% of them said, yes, we've been there. We're on the map, folks. So we're on the map. And what this amounts to is that Missouri Community Betterment offers us an opportunity to do things in our community that make us more cohesive, that get our name out there, that bring tourists here, that maybe will bring someone who finds this is a wonderful little community and they'd like to start a business, that they just want to come here and drop off a few dollars as they're walking through, as they're visiting our area. And so I believe that this is very much worthwhile. One of the things that Missouri Community Betterment does is it encourages us to get our young people involved in doing projects that will bring our community together. And let them know that this is a place that they live. They may want to live here for a long time. They may want to go away and get an education. And they may want to come back here and say, this is a great place to raise a family. And so that's our long-term goal, and we would like to see that happen. I'm proud that we were able to pull together a couple of projects that gained some recognition this year. And it gives us the impetus to move ahead. So I'm just real proud to be able to give this to our city tonight.
What were the two things?
The two things were the Pioneer Heritage Festival of the Ozarks. That year we had 1,100 people that came out for that. It was out at Chapel Grove Event Center, Yawtham Event Center. And the other event was the 2,500 Miles of Arts and Culture. And during that week, we presented 14 different activities. And we didn't advertise a lot because we were the very first community in the state to do this. And Louis Riggs, who started this, has now been elected state representative from up around Hannibal area. He's going to continue working with this and get other communities on board. That's what the 2,500 miles is. It's 2,500 miles around the state of tourism. Who's presenting what? And we have a lot to present here in our area. If we can bring those walking wallets in, I think that we can grow interest in our community. And as I said, maybe we can bring in more economic growth. So I'm proud of this, and I think it's a good step forward. And I just thank you for the opportunity to bring this back to you.
Thank you.
If we could for just a moment. So the Missouri Community Betterment Task Force is under the chamber's Economic Development Committee. And I know that there's quite a few of you here that have been involved in those projects or with our MCV task force right here in Ava. So if you guys would stand up for just a moment, and we'd like for the aldermen and the mayor to see who's been working on these things as well. So if you guys would mind, I know you're sitting here, but I'm going to show you off in a minute. So they've all worked together. That's what we're saying. And some of you couldn't be here tonight, but thanks, Paula, again.
Well, thank you very much, all of you that have done the hard work to receive the honor, third place honor. I know a little bit about the 2,500 mile thing because you've met here, and you've worked your tails off on that. That was a lot of work. And I wasn't a part of it, but I do know that from listening to a little bit to Nana and a lot to Dick, that it was a lot of work. It took a lot of meetings, and there were lots of stops along the way, and so...
The same thing was true of Pioneer Heritage Festival.
Yeah, I know. I wasn't as aware of the meetings.
Well, the meetings were not on this campus.
No.
But yes, those things are really very...
But you presented us with the plaque, and the committees of the Chamber of Commerce earned that plaque with our blessing. But you're the ones that did the work. Sure did, and we appreciate that.
We appreciate that.
Everything helps. Everything helps, definitely. And so, thanks again. Anything else you, Nana, you'd like to say, or Judy?
Onward.
I'll take this time to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the work that you do. Of course, thank Judy for all the work that she does. We have a lot of members of the chamber, and I'm proud of it. Proud of the town.
You need to know how many members we have.
220.
We just hit 220, our highest roster of things.
I saw that on something.
I published it all over.
Something that came from the chamber. I've forgotten. I saw it today. I don't know if it was the blast or the... Anyway, thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the meeting. They're always exciting.
We have another meeting. We have another meeting.
I know.
Make a motion with the second. Second, all in favor.
Suzanne, this has to do with Peggy's little report. Do you want to tell them what you saw today?
In our checking account, we are at 2.3 million. And that's great because that's after the bill was paid. We paid everything before she left.
Hey, guys, we're spinning it just fast as I'm spinning. The balance is hailing, so...
Are you going to say like Peggy, but we've got this one outstanding?
No. No. I was telling somebody the other day, and I don't know that we all realize this. We buy electricity, and we buy wholesale and then we sell it. Our bill from our electric company was $441,000 last month. Most people, I don't think, realize we have an electric bill to pay. Over $400,000. Coquelin, well, Coquelin's electric bill will run $350,000 a month. So when... You know, we have a lot of responsibility as council. We do. We're just, we're not a very big town, but there's a lot going on here.
That $2 million, sounds like a lot of money, but you know, it paid about five months' electric bill.
Yeah, that's right. And we've had times if the check from Coquelin didn't come at the time we met, it was going to drop us down pretty quick.
I can remember, it's been years ago, where I'm reading through some old minutes in the year. You may be able to remember when the city of Ava purchased the infrastructure. But anyway, I just, when I was reading back through that, the amount of money that a board spent to buy that infrastructure at that time was just a, it was a large sum.
Since the camera's going. I was not old enough to remember that. I kind of think that was done in the mid-'50s.
Murley Grayville.
Wasn't it?
Jack Burlock.
Jack Burlock was on the board when that...
Well, you may have been mayor. He may have been mayor at that time.
I know the name of it when I was reading that.
At that time, I wouldn't have cared.
That was quite a punch to see, you know, they took that and guess where we're at today.
And I remember Jim talking about that to Curry. It was not an easy task. It was not all fun and games getting that far. But I'm telling you, we're in better shape than a lot of other cities who do not own their... She was... I know Nana was surprised that we put her at the very beginning. I had to go before a council at Rockaway Beach. And every single thing they have is on the agenda, all the way from who wants gravel in the driveway, who wants a whistle to put in. I was number 19. The night that I went, the mayor wore a sidearm. Had two policemen there. And it was different than our meeting. So we're fortunate here. Oh, what was I going to tell you? They said that they passed a motion that White River owns their complete electrical system there. Streetlights are owned. And they couldn't afford the electric bill, so they just turned off all the streetlights. And I was there one night. They passed a motion that they were going to start turning their streetlights on. So I was number 19 on the list. So I just got up and went down to where the property was and got the number off the pole and came back. And sat there another hour. And I told them I was glad they were doing that because I needed a light down there. But they never did get it turned on. Good point. So it is important that we own our electric. That's not on the agenda. Suzanne?
And if it's all right with you, I'll just wait and there's some things that you need to talk about.
Talk about? Okay. Want to wait on both of them or just the one?
Whatever you want me to do.
We'll do it both. We'll wait on both. The first ordinance is merely calling for the election the first Tuesday after the first Monday in April. And that'll be, these three positions here are going to come up. East and West Alderman and Mayor's positions. That's one ordinance. The other ordinance, and it's something that we've been kicking around. Peggy and I talked about it, and Lisa in utilities. And what we've done over time, originally, the cutoff date, the 15th has been the day that penalty was applied if you hadn't paid your 15th. And the last business day of the month, I think was the original day that it was discontinued and stopped. And then it was stretched on out to the 5th of the month, thinking that it would give people a little bit more time and checks come on the 3rd and that sort of thing. Really, really hasn't worked that way. It's just spread it out further. It hasn't helped anybody's situation any, certainly not the city. It's stretched it out enough that if someone is unable to pay their electric bill, that we have 90 days lost. And because of that, whenever people have rental property and someone wants to move in, and we compute the deposit, the deposits are high because the possibility of what we can lose on a piece of property is high. So as our meters become automated and the time is shortened between the time we do the readings and we build, and we shorten up the cutoff time, those things will help the city's cash flow, will also help deposits on rental property. But what we'd like to do is go back from the 5th of the month, go back to the 25th. The 15th is the day the penalty, bills come out on the 1st, penalty on the 15th, discontinuance of service on the 25th. And that's the change in the ordinance, just about a sentence or two in a couple of places. And that's what we're presenting to the council, and that's why. It will shorten it. What we would do, if the council approves it, we'd start handing little slips out with everybody that comes in. And we're going to send letters out to all of the people. And it would begin in the month of March. So I guess it's maybe 90 days or more, actually more, before that would start. But we would like to do that if the council...
So we're shortening it instead of cutting the power off on the 15th. We're backing that up 10 days.
To the 25th.
Or maybe, yeah, 25th.
Yeah.
11 days.
But giving people plenty of time to know that it's coming. And each month, as the months go by, and I talk to people in regard to their bills and trying to work out things, I've told all of them that it was coming. And that there would be a day when we would shorten it and put it back into a little more businesslike arrangement.
Rather than the 15th. On deposits, right now, we're like looking for 90 days deposit. And then if we go this way, we're going to try to...
It'll help the days, so they're going to save approximately 10 days. With them, yes. It protects the city another 10 days. But this is kind of the first step in the whole process of getting our utilities red and built for the previous month, not two months before. So what we'd like to do is be able to send the bills, maybe run, collect the bills on the 25th bill and mail them on the 1st. You get your bill the first day of December. It's for November instead of October. That's what we're aiming for. That's what this whole process of automated electric meters and water meters has been about. And we've got all the electric meters in, and we're slowly putting the water meters in because they're $200 apiece. And it's over $1,300. So we didn't feel like we could do that all at once. Now, there'll be a time, we get down toward the end, when we could probably finish it off with a pretty good chunk. But that's a pretty good load to do all at one time. And Peggy and I talked about it. Just decided maybe we ought to do 1215 a month. And replacing it to go bad was... Now, and once we get that done, the next step will be to read them in the office. Because the system, we're going out with the machine and going through neighborhoods and picking up all of those signals. That's not going to last. You know, things are happening so fast. That system's going to go away. Our meters will work on the new system, but we'll have to...
Both, electric and...
Electric, yeah.
Electric, yeah.
It's a continual, continuous process.
Of course, we're doing that now with one person instead of two, right? We have two for the year.
Joe Johnson is taking care of all the meter reading. Justin's in the sewer and water department. And Joe, in the last two months, Joe has had all the meters read and everything done to the 15th by himself, where it used to take two people. So now Joe does it all. And if the weather's bad, he's hustling to get it done, but he's doing it. So anyway, that's what we are proposing with the ordinance. And we went ahead and wrote it up so that if we choose to approve it, then we can go ahead with it and send orders and all that. And if we choose not to, we can disadvantage. So I think before we do the ordinance, maybe we ought to see if we're going to approve it. How do you feel?
I think it's a good deal for the city and the people.
Yeah, the people, it's good for them.
Yeah, deposits. It's going to...
This probably cuts more in line with like REAs.
Well, we all are familiar with 15th and 25th. And that's not an abnormal arrangement, so... In which case, I'll let you do your ordinances, and we'll just vote on the order.
The first ordinance I have is 1040. An ordinance calling a general municipal election to be held in the city of Ava, Missouri on Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2019 for the purpose of electing mayor and two aldermen, one from the west ward and one from the east ward of said city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First reading.
Second.
All in favor.
And the second reading on that is ordinance 1040. An ordinance calling a general municipal election to be held in the city of Ava, Missouri on Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2019 for the purpose of electing mayor and two aldermen, one from the west ward and one from the east ward of said city.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
All in favor.
And then the second ordinance I have is ordinance 1041. An ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri repealing ordinance number 650, Chapter 98, Section 2B and Chapter 98, Section 4A, and replacing them with a new Chapter, Section 98, Section 2B. Meter reading and billing for service due date and Chapter 98, Section 4A discontinuance.
And a motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
And then the second reading of ordinance 1041 is an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri repealing ordinance number 650, Chapter 98, Section 2B and Chapter 98, Section 4A, and replacing them with a new Chapter, 98, Section 2B. Meter reading and billing for service due date and Chapter 98, Section 4A discontinuance.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Solid.
Second.
Aye.
Second. All in favor.
Do you all have a chance to look at the ISO?
Yes.
Do you have anybody here that knows anything about ISO? Yes, would you? Fire chief?
Yes, sir.
You've got the floor if you want. You've got about 90 seconds.
As you know, we submitted a two- to three-year plan when we were going to purchase the E-truck. Well, it kind of got a kink in it when they showed up six months later to do our ISO review. But we had enough, enough stuff implemented that everything went good. ISO went from a seven down to a five. And from what I understand, that means residential insurance could be as low from 10 to 15%. Reduction under insurance rates. So it took a lot of work. It wasn't... I can't do it by myself. I had a lot of people helping. The fire department did a lot of work to make this happen. So anyway, we tried to do what we said we would do, so... And it worked out, and you did. You know, we've all talked about the ISO at different times. You don't produce revenue in the fire department. You know, you're a little bit like the airport. And so when expenditures come up for departments that don't generate revenue, sometimes you get passed over. And I don't mean we're getting ready to buy you a new truck, so don't ask. Or another fire station. But anyway, dropping the ISO is one of those ways that you bring attention to whoever happens to be sitting there, that you're paying attention to what you're doing. And I know it involves training, involves a lot of other stuff that you've done. Thank you. You've done what you said you were going to. Played your game. We're working on your building. Slowly looking better. Once the outside's done, we'll work on the inside. Don't give up.
We got our electrical outlets today.
Today.
That sounds ridiculous, two outlets, but it means all the different stuffs.
And the water froze up.
Did it really?
It really did. Yeah. So, you know, I talked to you here a while back about getting Jeff to help us with that and move that big water line from where it goes up beside the building to the inside. And so I talked to him the other day about it. And with the weather like it was, I told him, I said, we'd probably wait till spring and do it when the weather's warmer. But I didn't know this was going to happen. So I might have to go talk to him and see if we can't go ahead and probably get it done. Because what happened is that during the excavation, where they put that French drain right at the back of the building, they said the water line wasn't but about a foot deep. So all it's got is gravel on top of it, no dirt anymore. And so we went down there this evening, and sure enough, this froze up. And so, but I rerouted it to where, we do have water inside the building, but if the temperature stayed like this and really cold, that line will bust. And so we'll have to go on and get it done.
It's not how much lines we've got to put in.
It's not. Actually, it's just going to be cutting it off early and just moving it probably about a foot to the inside. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's a two-inch line coming up. And instead of putting it up under the concrete, they just run it to the side of the building and run it in. So over the years, they just had a heat tape on it and insulated it. And it's unsightly, and it looks bad. And when the weather gets down to in the single digits or below, then we could have issues. So, but we'll get that fixed.
Well, head patients, what's your building?
Oh, it's looking good.
We'll get there.
It's looking a lot better.
We'll get there. I am glad that the building's not all black. I think we accomplished something by having red and not having it all black.
But it's a lot better than the other colors that somebody chose. But I'm not sure.
Well, it just depends, you know. I mean, otherwise, all vehicles would just be black and wouldn't be any other color.
Right.
What do you like?
Well, thanks a lot.
Your work, we appreciate it.
I don't know if you guys realize it, but whenever we have an occupancy permit, we call on these two guys to go out and do the inspections and check their access, check, there's a whole list of stuff that they have to check in order to get that occupancy permit. And, we, sometimes it's not convenient to do that. So, we're always calling them for that. Anytime anybody's gonna burn, we've got to notify, or want to burn, we'll call. Has to go through the fire department, so... I'm glad that we, we're able to help you some.
And we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And on the ISO rating like that, we're, we're down to a five, I'm so grateful. Um, to get a lower than a five...
I knew that was coming.
Yeah, we're not... Uh, there'd be a lot of stuff that has to change. One of the biggies that they told us was nine-one-one. Which, you know, we may or may not in the future get it. Some of the other things, there's pre-planning, which we can do. And Tom had already talked about going ahead and getting some of that done.
What are some of the other things we're gonna have to dig?
We have to maintain a hundred and ninety-five hours per person for training a year. Unfortunately, because we're all volunteer, that has become more and more difficult. We're very fortunate to have some people that devoted a great deal of time this year, specifically to testing hydrants and training and doing the things that we need to do. About six people on our department met that hundred and ninety-five plus. Um, and so that helped greatly when ISO said, "What are you doing?" The, the things that we'll need to improve in is, we need to look at, and Tom and I have talked about that, is upgrading our record management system. One of the things that we were told absolutely will not be accepted next ISO evaluation is a paper map with the hydrants on. They want GPS data on every hydrant in the city, and they want it on an electronic map. Because many, uh, the mayor and Suzanne probably know this, I'm guessing, because you've probably got the same calls we have. An insurance provider is trying to write a policy for somebody, and they're saying, "Well, this doesn't exist." "Well, how close is it to a hydrant? How close is it to a fire station?" And we can't pull it up. We have to pull out a paper map, and we have to look at it and say, "Well, best guess, it's gonna be within half a mile." And so, ISO, our auditor was very generous with us. He did give us a little latitude, because he saw how hard we were working. He accepted a paper map with a bunch of red dots on it. And we did that by the seat of our pants. But, the, you know, that's something that we're gonna have to look at, is changing our record management system. Cost associated with that, you know, in our opinion, is nominal, given that, you know, it's something that's gonna be required if we wanna keep our rating. The other things that ISO really stressed was communications. We, we can get by, we can actually score more points than we did score. The issue that we have with ISO is, because we have multiple dispatch centers in the, the city and the county, they're claiming that we are not a single-point dispatch, because county has the availability to be called for an emergency in the city. What I did find out, talking to other, other fire agencies in the area, is that we could kind of cheat. If it came down to it, we could ask an adjoining county's nine-one-one center to fill out our ISO information. In that, the information would still be considered legal and valid, because statewide, we have a county-meach-late policy that says, if we adjoin a county, we're technically legally obligated to respond in an mass casualty incident. But, I would like to see, you know, at some point, our county and our city, you know, look at that communications investment for the long term, because that's a citizen's, you know, issue too. The ability to pick up the phone and not have to figure out and fumble around who you have to call if something's going wrong. Equipment, ISO was, was pretty impressed with our equipment. Obviously, there is room for improvement. We have one truck that, you know, over time, every year that passes, is becoming a showpiece. Bless, bless its heart, it still pumps, but it doesn't move very good. And so, over, over the course of time, just general maintenance and improvements that, you know, respectfully, this, this board over the last four years has given more to us, and you guys have stood behind us and supported us. We go out and we do this at no cost for our community and our citizens, and, and for the first time in twenty-plus years, to have a council that's behind us that has allowed us to improve the way that we have, has just been phenomenal. And, you know, we're happy to keep going, as long as we have some support from up, from up there at that desk.
We'll make y'all look good.
We, uh, like I said, we have a lot of that stuff implemented, but if we don't, when it comes back in five, four and a half years, if we don't have it established, then we could get next one.
Two.
Two.
He said he will be back in two years.
Two years.
So, they will be checking us, so we just need to move forward with our stuff.
And we will, we will. You guys have really been good to us, so we appreciate it. Hug y'all.
That was a perk that we had for our annexation on Girdner Road, is one of the residents wanted to be in the city because of the ISO lowering her insurance. Because if you were within the city and so close to the fire station, your, your rating would go down. She wanted to, it didn't work out well, but...
Does it affect the fire hydrant?
It's a, most of it's the insurance call, whichever company you're going with. But some of them will allow you, if you're so many miles from the city limits, they will give you the ISO rating of the city.
For from a fire hydrant, right?
Thousand feet? If you're a thousand feet, within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant, you, you, you qualify for the ISO of that department. Because of law interpretation, um, some years ago, there was a law that says fire departments are obligated to respond within five miles of their boundaries. Doesn't matter where you are in the state of Missouri, that law was broadly applied in a lot of insurance companies. American Family specifically is one that comes to mind. Uh, if you're within five miles of the city limit, they will let you use the city's ISO for your insurance purposes.
Well, in our case, we, she was talking about somebody in the road that had a fire hydrant right by her house.
Right.
And she's outside the city.
Yeah.
But then, you know, we've got some unusual things like that. Their wells were going dry years ago, so that's why the water's running out there. Anyway, guys, thank you very much. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
One of these days, we'll be proud of the building.
Yep.
Don't back it off. No, don't move it off. Right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we've done the ordinances. Just a few days after our last meeting, David Froling with Gaskin Hill came down and met with Burley and myself, and we talked in general terms about what we, kind of building we wanted with the electric shed. And, as far as building's concerned, it's relatively simple. You wanna tell them what we did?
No, you're doing a good job.
Well, which we got, what we're talking about, bidding is a wooden structure. And, with metal on the outside and metal roof. That's a general term. With, with a man door on each end. We're talking about twenty-two, four twenty-two-foot doors, fourteen and a half feet high, sixteen-foot ceilings. Eventually, you know, we're gonna need a concrete apron out in front. That's not part of this, but it's, it's coming. We talked about, uh, an estimated cost of insulation, too, to see what the total cost of this building's gonna be, if we're looking at the insulation part of it. And we're talking about spray on bone, is what we were interested in.
There'll be alternates in the bidding, so, you know, we like on the installation, uh, I think, more. But anyway, there'll be some alternates on the, some different choices. If we can, when it come down, we can look at it.
Only, uh, it's not complicated, is it?
No, no.
We'll have the plumbing over in the northwest corner for a bathroom, if the time comes, but not necessarily this time. And also, in time, or at this time, we will need on the east end to build the concrete platform, like we've got on the existing shed, for all the transformers, the ones at the existing electric shed, and then get those things out of the airport. For real ISO, to have our quality. So, those are just things not being done necessarily at this time, but really, really do need to be done. We can't see how our money's going, how much the building costs. The way I haven't heard from them, but I, it won't be too long.
Shouldn't be long.
So we were, we were pleased about the meeting. And of course, the fire station, you can kinda see some of what's going on there. We replaced the windows, knocked the door. The windows have been replaced, there's been some insulation put up. Uh, we've wrecked the east and the north. Are they complete?
They're not.
Uh huh. Uh, I didn't go by later this afternoon, but the black was across the front. Was that?
That's all we got.
Okay.
They were doing some woodwork on the stoppage and stuff, too, this afternoon.
Okay. So, the front's been done, and a little bit on the south side, through the office. Couple of doors, uh, we've got to get over and clean up the end of the building. I haven't had anybody over to do that. Pull that dog pin out and get the trees away. There's some trees growing right up next to the south side of the building. The backs all cleaned up, they, they did that when they laid the, the French drains. Once, once the outside is done, then we can start looking at stuff this, through the winter, looking at stuff on the inside. The plan would be to talk to someone like Great Nation about painting to match the existing metal. So if you've got, or that's, that's the way I look at it, if you've got black across the bottom, take it all the way across those bays.
Right.
And the red and the black. Make it match. Not all black. Not all black.
Thank you, David.
Not all black. Anyways, it's, it's, it's coming, until it look good. We had a really good dedication at the park on the sign. And I can tell you, I, I couldn't imagine really that the sign would turn out to be that nice. But it did. Especially the colors, I thought the colors were wonderful.
That was the better part.
Yeah. Where we are now with that sign is, uh, Burley went out today and marked it off for Carl to dig the walking path, the half-circle, semi-circle. And, um, Carl will dig it this week if he can. And then we'll put crushed rock in there and, and pack it down and let it set all winter. And then, the, uh, it has a concrete curb on the outside and the inside, which has to go on the rock. And I've talked to Jeremiah about doing that. And then the sand goes in, and then the bricks go in. So, Wayne Malzum will lay the brick, said he'd do that. We'll furnish him, somebody to help him, so he doesn't have to get up and down. So we, we kinda got that in progress. Won't, I'd say we'd be lucky, early summer, maybe, have the walk, walkway done. And, uh, and then the cops are wearing the flags in the back. Uh, we've got, we've got power there already at the bridge, if you're aware of it. When they built that bridge across the creek, they ran power to the very end of that bridge, right on the side. So, it's really easy to access.
So we've got a question for you. I'm getting a few people asking, beginning to ask about the papers. How long's it gonna take to, you know, laser these in? Say, say I want one, or somebody on the board, you know, wants one of them. How long does it take to get one of them? I mean...
I don't know.
I mean, it's, the laser then, I'm assuming?
Uh huh. I'll have to ask Katie. And I'll put that, put that down, Susan, I'll call her and find out.
I don't know. I think, I think there's gonna be a lot of them.
Would she be the one making the contact? Do we go through her for the, the lasering on the papers?
We haven't made a decision on the papers.
Yeah.
We've looked at the price of those papers, and they were right at two dollars and ninety cents a piece. And, um, forty percent of that's freight, because they're coming from Chicago. Four hundred and eighty of them cost almost six hundred dollars to ship. So, it's gonna take about three thou, with probably about three thousand bricks, based on, um, it being curved, and based on having sun to be engraved. The process will be, we, we'll, someone will come in, we'll go through the engraving process, then that brick will be put in, and the new one that's in it will come out. We haven't really worked out exactly how it will be, but in general, well, in general, our veterans groups will have a form, which will identify the person as a veteran. That was kind of veteran. And then they'll bring that application here to Suzanne, and Suzanne will work with them as far as what inscription, what they want inscribed on it, and the cost of that. And then it will go to Katie to be inscribed. Do not have, no, 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 it will take her, we'll find out.
I'm assuming the more of them we can get up front, the better we're gonna be about the laser printing. Because I don't, I don't think, these bricks are gonna be hard to get out, once they're in there. So, I'm thinking the more we get ahead of time with the printing, laser printing, the better off we're gonna be.
Talking about putting them in initially.
Because once they're down, they're not gonna come out very easy.
So those need to be pre-ordered?
Uh, I'm not real sure.
They're not...
Well, that's the thing, you know, we've got, we've got time to talk about that. If we, if we wanna work real hard at setting up the process of how we're gonna do that, and getting the brick now and starting the engraving, the lasering now, I think, no reason why we couldn't do that.
I think the sooner we can do that, you know, we'll come up with a brick that we want huge.
I tell you, Burley and I will, will look at the papers and then come back to the council. And try to do that next meeting. And I don't know how long it takes to laser each one, and, uh, that'll give us an idea, but you start talking about three bucks a, a paper, three thousand. But, see, that's something I wouldn't have known. Take the rig out, put it in the bag. So it may be, we ought to get... Need to think about that. I'll be, I'll be getting three.
So those could be pre-ordered and installed, instead of pulling the brick out and replacing it?
Yeah.
If we could do that, I think it would really be... Okay, well, I have a lot of brick.
Well, I have a lot of brick. I mean, with names and rank, branch of service that they were in. Well, and part of, part of that, too, is seeing exactly what it is we can put on the brick. How much room do we have? How many spaces do we have? Do we want the name, branch of service, and part of war?
Could this, it's going to be limited.
Can't put a four-by-eight project on it? No. No. The helicopter, as it right now, belongs to somebody somewhere. Maybe the post at Forside, maybe not. But Douglas County Veterans Memorial Association does not have ownership of it at this point. In the meantime, we will work hard at the memorial we've got. That's a good idea, Burley. Burley and I will try to have a brick to present us, and we'll kind of begin work on a form that can be used by Douglas County Veterans Memorial Association, the L W American Legion, all three of them have a memorial. And we'll bring that to the council, too. A motion to approve, the court adopted, please.
I'd like to motion to approve your court documents.
I'll tell you, we're not going to try to close this evening, but we do need to approve the closed minutes. Do I have them?
Okay.
Closed minutes, October the 23rd, 2018. A motion to approve, please.
Much to approve.
Second. I'll second. Generally, think of anything else we can do then? Thanks again. If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.